Called order the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks for September 12th, 2023 with city administrator, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Ben Pachewinski.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does term Coram number one, 2050 transportation plan, the street and highway elements update? Scuba.
Thank you for having us here. We are, I'm here with Jason Carby, who is our consultant on this plan. He is kind of in the middle of a conference right now, too, so I greatly appreciate his effort. And we're just trying to update you guys on where we're at with this plan because we do know that it will be moving kind of fast because we are hoping to adopt this by the end of the year. So I'm going to let Jason share his screen, hopefully, and...
I just got a note that the host is disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay. Corey is, but if you can follow along, Jason, I know everyone in the room has their presentation on their computers.
Okay.
So you can just kind of go through with the, start with the agenda.
Yeah. So, yep, so the items we're going to talk about are some of the travel model results. Talk about this kind of being a state of good repair plan. We'll talk a little bit about what that means. We're going to talk, you know, as we went through this, engaged with the public, looked at, you know, what all the data were telling us, all the growth patterns. You know, there's a lot of transportation projects that we've identified, and so we're referring to that as a vision plan, and so we'll talk through that a little bit. And then I think Corey Thompson is the host, so we'll see maybe, Corey, if I can... Are you able to share the agenda, Corey? I apologize, everyone. So I guess if we flip to the first slide, we've got the range of strategies. So, you know, as we went through this process, we, you know, identified that, you know, based on all those needs that we talked to you about in June when we had a chance to start reviewing the travel model, that there was a range of different project types and strategy types that we really want to, you know, take a look at incorporating into this plan. We've got maintenance and state of good repair projects. That's really taking care of the system that we've got out there today. You know, we've spent, you know, decades investing in our, in our street and highway system, and so this is really an opportunity to make sure we keep them in a state of good repair, you know, get rid of potholes, you know, take care of bridges, all of that. The second type of strategies are operations and safety. These really focus on intersections, so it's all about making sure we've got, you know, safety in mind, signal timing, take advantage of, you know, where we've got signals, make sure they're coordinated so we can get the best traffic flow possible with those, and really focus on taking the infrastructure that we've got and getting a little bit more out of it in terms of safety and operations. These types of projects don't have any widening associated with them, and so that's kind of one of the key takeaways in the operations and safety are really trying to do the most with what we've got. We've got widening, these would be adding travel lanes into our growth corridors, so it basically takes, for instance, like a two-lane rural corridor, widening it to three lanes or, which would be two-lane or one lane in each direction and a center turn lane, or a four-lane divided street. New streets and bridges, so we've got some growth areas, particularly on the Grand Forks side where we've got new streets kind of anticipated in those growth areas. We're also looking at new Red River crossings. We've got some we'll show you on the next map, or one of the upcoming maps. And then new railroad grade separations, the opportunity to take at great rail crossings and at a bridge so that there's less conflicts and safety issues with those. And finally, as we kind of grow, continue growing as a region, you know, starting to pave gravel roads, you know, in neighborhoods and businesses start to kind of move out into the rural areas, that's an opportunity to start paving some of those roads. And so, I'm sorry, Terry, can you tell me what the next slide is?
The model run.
Okay, so we've got the, what we call the existing plus committed conditions model run. So this is what we touched on with you back in June, was this was looking at if we just took what we've got in our current capital programs, so meaning, you know, we, each city has kind of got a short-term CIP. The NPO got its five-year TIP, our Transportation Improvement Program. These are the projects that we think are kind of guaranteed and are going to happen, but those are really in the short term. For instance, the 47th Avenue South interchange on the Grand Forks side, we anticipate that's going to happen here in the near future. So that one's considered committed, but a lot of the projects that you'll see that we start walking through here aren't included. So this is like, if we don't do anything beyond what we've already committed to, what happens? And so you can see we've got a lot of growth, particularly in East Grand Forks, we've got, you know, growth on the Gateway Corridor, US2, a little bit on Central and Demers, and just seeing kind of some of those increases across the board. So, and then we get into the other build runs, right, Terry?
Yeah, the vision plan.
Yep, okay, so then, so based on those needs that we identified, this is the range of projects that really, you know, so this is again talking, looking at the congestion, looking at, you know, some of the safety issues, looking at all the input that we got from stakeholders and the public, you know, what are some of the good ideas? And you can see we've got, for instance, in East Grand Forks, we've identified, you know, some potential, what we call the safety and operations projects. So looking at, you know, I know there was a Minnesota 220 corridor study, so kind of adopted some of the concepts from that, making sure we, you know, do a good job of taking care of, you know, those intersection conflicts that we're worried about popping up in the future, safety along US2, looking at some of those projects that would kind of support the industrial park, you know, those types of projects. So Terry, at this point, anything that you would add?
No, we're just, you know, we're wanting to make sure we're looking at all the additional crossings as well, as well as any in Grand Forks. We were looking at some of those added railroad crossing intersections and things like that, too.
Right, right, yeah, so that's a good add. We do have the near South End Bridge that would, you know, would be, you know, in anywhere in kind of that range of box number four there. We're looking at potentially a Merrifield Road crossing down to the south. And then one thing that's been talked about in the past, in the past plans, is a northern bridge crossing as well. All right, is our next slide the model run?
Yeah, the two bridges.
Yep, perfect.
You might be able to share now. You might be able to share now.
Okay, okay, great, hold on one second, sorry. Ah ha, here we go. Thank you. I had moved like one slide into that slide. I was having a little bit of an issue there. So what we did was we took kind of that whole range of all those different alternatives that we look back here in this slide and put them into the travel model to see what would happen to the travel patterns when we looked at, you know, some of those operational improvements we talked about, some of the widening that, you know, we had mentioned potentially in Southern Grand Forks, and then what those new bridge crossings would do. And so, I'm going to really quick go to presentation though there. So one of the key things I want you guys to take away from this is we're going to walk through three different versions of this. One of them is going to be with two bridges in place, so a new South End Bridge and a new Merrifield Road Bridge. One of them will be with just a new Merrifield Bridge, and one of them will be with just a new South End Bridge. And so this one with both of the bridges in place, we see some pretty significant decreases in traffic volumes along Fourth Avenue South and Minnesota Avenue, right across the Point Bridge, decreases on Cherry Street, and then we see some decreases on, yeah, Cherry and Belmont, in Grand Forks. We also see decreases on Demers, pretty much all the way from Columbia, pretty much all the way up, you know, through East Grand, up to, you know, Gateway US2 Corridor. And then we do see with the new South End Bridge, we do see, you can see some of those changed patterns over in the, on the East Grand Forks side. You see folks kind of coming out of the Point neighborhood and heading down to where a new bridge might be. We see increases on 32nd Avenue South in Grand Forks. We do include projects for a 17th Avenue South Bridge or grade separation over I-29 and also a 42nd Street widening. So you can see, we do see some increases in traffic associated with those. And then I'm going to look at the other two, really show those other two really quick, and I guess if there's questions or comments, feel free to kind of talk about, you know, what, any questions you might have. A new Merrifield Road Bridge also sees some decreases in traffic in some of the same corridors because this bridge is a little bit further away from kind of the urban core of both East Grand Forks and Grand Forks. We see less traffic diversion with this concept. And so, you know, where we had decreases of maybe 4,000 cars a day on the Point Bridge, we have decreases closer to like 1,000 or 1,500 with just a Merrifield Road Bridge. And so, but you kind of see some of the similar patterns, and then similarly, we see, you know, just a few hundred decrease a day on the Sorely and up on the Gateway Bridge up north. And then finally, with the new South End Bridge, we see a little bit more, or we see, you know, a moderate amount more diversion than we do with just a Merrifield Bridge. Again, when you put the bridge closer to where all the, you know, where all the activity is, you tend to probably grab more traffic, so I don't think it's probably a surprise. But not as much as having both the Merrifield and the South End Bridge. We did see there were some trips in the future that we anticipate, again, as Grand Forks continues to grow down towards Merrifield Road, or it's also called 12th Avenue North with the county designation. We do see that there are some trips that would want to use that bridge further to the south, but not as many that would want to use the new South End Bridge there. So I don't know, Terry, anything you would add to this, or any questions, I guess, at this point?
So I think we, looking at the, some of the projects for, especially for East Grand Forks.
Yes, I'll just, sorry, really quick, that we, we're kind of, with all of these different funding sources, so what we need to do with this plan is, this is a plan that's federally required, and so what we need to do is, they want us to look at fiscal constraint, is what it's called. And basically what we need to do is look at all reasonably anticipated revenues from each of the DOTs that kind of come through the Federal Highway Administration, and also look at, you know, local funding levels. We did look at the pavement management plans that both, that the NPO had done for both communities on each side of the road, or each side of the river, and kind of took that information and kind of looked at what those annual funding capabilities were and what the requirements were just to kind of maintain our existing bridges and pavement, and kind of saw that, you know, based on that pavement management study and kind of talking with, you know, both cities, that, you know, this is really going to be a plan that's, from a fiscal constraint perspective, really is going to focus on maintaining the infrastructure that we've got in place. Again, this is a somewhat conservative approach. You know, there's lots of grant opportunities and things like that that pop up, you know, different funding sources do become available, but, and so that's not to say that there won't be some of these types of strategies with, you know, say, road widening or, you know, new intersection treatments and things like that, but that the vast majority of the projects will likely be, in that fiscally constrained list, will be state of good repair projects. And then we go, if we consider back this map of all these projects, sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit here, if we consider all these projects, these projects would all be things that are good ideas and want to maintain, but would be on what we call that vision list or illustrative or an illustration, illustrative list. And so I guess when we kind of started thinking about some of the top priorities for City of East Grand Forks, you know, some of the projects that, you know, kind of rose to the top would be some intersection improvements. I know there's been some, you know, increased safety and increased traffic concerns with Bigland Road and Reinhardt. Similarly, River Road, we kind of see some growth, River Road and 12th Avenue Northwest, 17th Street Northwest, the need for some maybe midterm-type intersection improvements in that part of that corridor. And then, you know, a lot of needs related to the industrial park. And so we've got the, you know, 10th Street, we've got, you know, several different projects along 10th Street, and then 11th Avenue is a kind of connect into the business park. The need to kind of pave some of those roads and reconstruct some of the infrastructure that we've got there out in place. And again, these are projects that we're assuming would be, you know, using that sub-target funding that the city receives every four years. And again, this would be a list of projects between 2028 and 2050. You know, and there's other, you know, funding sources, and, you know, we've got some potential for safety funding on some projects and things like that. And so, you know, there's other, other projects on that kind of draft vision project list that we anticipate will also be in the plan, but wanted to kind of at least present these kind of draft project priorities.
Mostly seeing where everybody's, you know, double checking, are we, are we hearing correctly, not just from our staff, from your staff, but also from the public as well, as well as both city councils, and wondering, you know, are we getting it right, or are we needing to reevaluate some of these things before we get to the final plan?
Just a question, Terry, on the Bigland Road and then Reinhardt, there, that's one of maybe three or four important intersections on Bigland Road. If, you know, this design develops and we decide to invest in a different intersection on Bigland, does that impact this plan? And should we be more broad as like Bigland Road intersections rather than focused on just the one problematic spot?
That is something that we can definitely include as well. I know in that particular Bigland Road study, there were two other intersections along there that were suggested, and we can definitely, we'll definitely be bringing all these things that we talk about and to the tack and moving it forward.
Thank you.
We also have a different study that's going to start up that save streets and roads for all. If there are specific intersections on Bigland, you know, we'll probably look at those as well. If they're in that plan, then they could move forward into the implementation plan. And then we would have monetary ways of fixing those intersections without having it in the long-range transportation plan. Seems like once it's in a plan or a study, it can be either in the long-range transportation plan, or if it's in that one, we have different ways of qualifying for federal dollars. So whether it's, whether we want to address it in the long-range transportation plan or if we just want to address it separately in a separate plan, we can do that, just so we can keep this one fiscally constrained, and then that one would be more, it's just open to just projects, you know, there's no fiscally constrained in, that we, we don't have to stay fiscally constrained in that one, so.
We'll have a list of projects that are fiscally constrained, and then we have that list of illustrative projects that when we find funding for it, it's easier, it's in the plan already stating that we, we're just looking for funding at some point in time, and once that funding is available, we can, we can basically say in our Transportation Improvement Program that we've found the funding and it's there, and that, yes, this is an important project in our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Yes, and we'll probably be discussing them a lot more in depth tomorrow at our Technical Advisory Committee meeting, which we're using as our steering committee for this plan, since all members of that committee are highly important in the makeup of input into this plan, so. Comments, questions, input? There hasn't been any talk, and I don't believe it's currently in any kind of plan.
It is in the Bigland.
It is in the Bigland to change it?
Yes.
I couldn't remember that one.
Just so it's in somewhere.
Yeah. I was just going to say, if it's not, then that's one of the things that these plans can do, is make suggestions for additional studies that need to be, to be done.
Upcoming studies look at that 17th and River Road intersection.
That's one of the ones that is up there at the very top there. We do have, I know that, that the city has been talking about some sort of roundabout or some, something, it's some sort of, you know, way to address some of the safety issues there, and so we wanted to make sure that that was in this plan as well, so that we're not, not missing anything, including all the improvements that wanting to be done in the industrial park. That, I think the next slide, Jason, is our, basically the contents of our plan.
Yeah, just an overview. So, yeah, we, as we're kind of wrapping this up, you know, developing the plan chapters and a lot of the stuff you guys, we presented to you guys in the past, and so, you know, working towards, you know, some of these, like the environmental mitigation and federal compliance are things, you know, that the NPO, you know, needs to include, but, you know, there's a lot of important things in here about talking about the community profile, you know, what, how, what the, how the system's doing today, you know, where do we have safety issues, where do you have congestion issues, and then what the future trends and needs are, and, you know, and then talking about what some of those projects that we just talked about were, and, you know, kind of how we got to the final plan. And so that's kind of laying the groundwork here, you know, for the contents of what's going to be in the draft transportation plan. I know we wanted to take this opportunity to make sure we let everybody know that next week, September 21st, there will be a public open house at the River Cinema between 4:00 and 6:00. And that's, yeah, like Terry mentioned, we are going to have the plan adopted by the end of the year.
And if you can't make...
And Terry, was anything else?
I was just going to say, if you can't make it to, to the open house itself, we'll be, there'll be information on GFEGFstreets.com, which is our webpage for this plan, and it'll have information from the past as well as hopefully gathering some more information that we'll be presenting at the open house. There's no other questions?
Anything else? I see none, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
All right, move on to number two, review and consider increase to building permits for 2024. Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Council President. One of the things that the Finance Committee has looked at this year is just ways to clean up a lot of different things that the city has, maintenance agreements, where we are with snow removal, just kind of looking at all of our bills and expenses as well as our revenue sources to determine if there's things that need to be changed or things that haven't been changed. One thing that we noticed was that our building permit fees haven't changed for the last 10 years. Part of it was, when I took over, we weren't sure yet if we were going to have a full-time building inspector, if we were going to stay with consulting, and then when it came time for that close to five-year review, we fell into COVID and it just kind of slipped past me. So here we are at the 10-year mark from when these permit fees were adopted, and it's a good time to take a look at it and then kind of set a plan in place to review these then again every three to five years to make sure that we're following the state standards in regards to buildable values, those types of things. I provided you with a lot of information, a lot of it was just to look through. The one important one that we use in our office quite a bit is the one-in-two-family-residence ones that was effective in 2013. It shows permit values from 1 to 1,000, starting at $42, and then it's a $7 increase every 1,000. This is based strictly on what customers, clients, anyone that's coming in to take out that permit is giving us in terms of their buildable value. They'll, it's supposed to be materials and labor. Typically, it's a rounded number. It's usually for our remodels, shingles, siding, those types of things, and this is what we've been using up till this point. What we have noticed, though, is that after 10 years, it's probably time, based on the work that we're doing and the inspections that need to follow this, particularly with fences. I know myself and Todd Grabansky, with water and light, every fence permit that we issue, we almost always have to go out and inspect, meet the customer, meet the fence company, those types of things. So the amount of work that we're putting into the permits is not matching necessarily the cost of the permit itself. So Brenda, the permit technician, and I sat down, and we gave you a couple of different options to look at in terms of increasing fees. We did, one was strictly just a, we'll save the flat rate of $42 at $42, and then we'll go up to $9 each additional 1,000. Then we've also looked at changing that flat rate of $42 to $45 and going up $9, or going up $8, or changing the base rate. I gave you a number of different, different options. What I can tell you is that going, the biggest increase is going up to $50 as a flat rate and then $9, we're looking at a 25% increase. The one that seemed to be about a 20% increase was a $45 flat fee and then a $9 increase per 1,000. And I thought, you know, with something, if you're looking at $10,000, you're going from originally $105 to 126, so, a difference of about $21 or 20%. One fear that I have is we don't want to increase, you know, that's about 2% per year from 2013. One thing that I don't want to do is I don't want to wait 10 years again to review this, but I also don't want to increase fees to the point where people are not coming in to obtain permits anymore, because then that also costs the city a lot of money to go out and do those inspections or to do the enforcement on not obtaining the permits. So we want to make sure that we're covering the cost that it takes for us to issue the permits, but not at such an expense that people begin to not come in for those permits. So I guess I've given you a number of different options. If it were me, my recommendation would be to go with the $45 flat rate and the $9 increase, so that's about a 20% increase. The other one that I provided you, when we do new permits, new permits fall under, so it's from scratch, new houses, new construction or commercial, new industrial, those permit fees are set based on a buildable value that the state sets. So per square foot, they'll give you a cost per square foot. So we, they have the fees set as to what you charge per 1,000 over a certain base rate, and then goes on, and then it also sets your plan review fees. So what I did was I provided you a lot of information, fees based on the 22, 2022 Minnesota statute rates, our current rates, our current commercial rates, but then I also had our building inspection crew break it down, and there's a single sheet here that shows your current fee value, then one if we use the statute, and then one if we use the weighted average, and then it's broken down into individual items there. So it doesn't matter, we're not looking at the fancy that you put into your house. What we do is if someone comes in and they say we're going to build a house and they give us a set of plans, we look at it in terms of what your square footage is and what your basement, and then they're rated differently based on the classification, whether it's a basement or if it's a second story, those types of things. Once we receive those square footages, and then we plug it into a cost per square foot. So if you look at our current fee schedule, let's say, for example, if we had an R3 occupancy, 2,200 square feet, and then an additional square foot, what it does is we compute it out, it comes to a current base value or a cost per square foot of $238,000. If we look at it based on the Minnesota State statute and the fees that they've set that... that a lot of cities have gone to because it's a state-set fee, it puts that valuation of that building at $435,000. Now, that cost may not necessarily be what it costs here, or what it costs in Brainerd, or what it costs in Duluth, or even down in the cities. So what we've done is we've taken a weighted average of what we've seen cost per square foot, and we've done a five-year weighted average. And that's what some of the smaller cities in the north have gone to, is a five-year weighted average. We know that the cost to build a building from scratch has gone up since 2013 to 2015. And we want to make sure that we're looking at those valuations. If we were to go solely on the valuation of what the contractor is building, those valuations are much higher. But they're including, you know, the cabinets, the granite countertops, they're including all the, all the pretty finishes. So we want to make sure that we are following what the state set for us. So based on that, you look at three different options here. Our current-based fee, the total permit fee is 1,804, if we go off of solely what our old cost per square foot is, which was set in 2015. If we go on a weighted cost average, our permit fee jumps about, oh, almost three times as much. And then if you look at the state value from the state statute, we're going up almost, I don't know, four times as much. So we issue about, right now, we're issuing about four to nine new house permits and/or one commercial building. We're happy if we get two new commercial or industrial buildings. But we think that based on where we're at with the state and where the state is looking for us to go, that we need to at least move ahead of what our current rate is and meet somewhere in the middle in that weighted average. So how that affects our budget, currently, our contract with our building inspectors, they get all of the plan review fees, which would make sense because they're doing all of the plan review. And then they get half of the permit fees. So will it be a noticeable change to our budget? It, it won't, and I budgeted low. But we, we figure, you know, at the low end, it'll bring in about another 10,000 and we'll, we'll kind of be where we should be in terms of what permits cost. We're not out of line from any other city right now in what they're charging. So, and if we were to move up to a different rate. Where we see a majority of our permit costs or revenue, I should say, is from the remodels. So, so it would be the one where we do the small increase to the base and then the additional $2 per 1,000. So, does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Domes.
No, no. The one thing we have to keep in mind is that we are paying a consultant to do the work because we have a hard time finding full-time workers right now to fill those building inspector positions. And so we also have a permit tech where 50% of her job is based on issuing building permits, and so this does help pay her salary. And it also helps, you know, in terms of all the work that we're having to put into these permits now. It, it takes more work than before, just in terms of what's going on. We want to make sure that we're out there and we're seeing. We've had problems with shingling companies before, we've had problems with fence companies. And so I think a presence from our office, you know, out there being helpful, walking through, providing them that guidance, making sure that the homeowners are getting a correct product and, you know, they're not having something that they're going to have to go back after, you know, a contractor or someone like that. I want to make sure that we can continue to do that, and this is helping us pay for that. The only other thing that I didn't include here that we would probably look at is another permit that we've recently come into that I had forgotten about until today. We have two different other types of permits. One's an excavation permit, and then there's one that we call a right-of-way permit, where people do work in the right-of-way. That involves a little bit more work for Steve or Jason or even Water and Light because we have to take a look at where our utilities are, we have to go out and market, we have to get people out there. So we were looking to set our right-of-way permit at $100 and increase our excavation permit to 50 to 55. So a $5 to $10 increase. But the right-of-way permit requires, looking at it from three different people. So it does require additional work, so.
Thank you. I've been involved in trying to sell a house where a previous owner didn't permit a change. Can you just outline what the consequences of that are? For like the, the remodel aspect of it?
Yes. What we've been finding is, is when you go into and they remodel and they haven't done the work or they haven't taken out the permit, we have no way of using either our staff and/or the Department of Labor and Industry to go back after the contractor and help the homeowner, take a look at it, and go after their insurance or the bond, or figure out a way to fix that without it costing the homeowner itself. So again, like you said, we don't want to price ourselves out where people aren't doing it. A lot of insurance companies, a lot of, when you remorg, you know, when you take out appraisal, remortgages, anything that you're doing right now, they're looking at your permits, what you've, what you've permitted for and those types of things. So us keeping on top of where the work's being done and how it's getting done is very important to us because that's our job is to protect the citizens of East Grand Forks from poor work or having a fence in a right-of-way or those types of things. So, so we want to make sure that we're out and we're available and we're doing the upfront work so we don't have to do it at the back end.
Mayor.
I know of a, of a certain individual who owns some rental property in Grand Forks, and they replaced windows on this structure and didn't have a building permit. And sometime later, they had their rental inspection and the windows didn't meet egress for the bedroom. So the dimensions of the windows, and they're like, when did these windows go in? And they told them what year. They, they went to pull the building permit on those windows, there was not one. And they said, so that's back on you guys. Now, if there would have been a building permit and had been missed, it looked like there would have been some recourse back to the city that they did not require the proper opening at that time. So you really can save yourself money in the long run to go through the permitting process in a case like that to get the proper egress window that meets the, the legal standard. That's another example.
And I will say that it, it takes a lot of people, even just with a building permit. I, we discuss a lot of it at our utility group, Water and Light's involved, Jason with Public Works is involved. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of different departments that get involved with the different types of permits that we issue. And it takes a little bit of work. And, but we also want to make sure that everybody's happy and that we're doing our job. And so we want to be able to at least kind of cover some of that cost.
So go ahead with the 45 and 9 and weighted average, is that what you're-
That would be my suggestion, recommendation. And then this would start in, in January 1 of 2024, so.
Anybody else have any questions for her? I see none, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Number three, consider motor grader rentals 2023, 24, Mr. Sturdo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So typically during our snow season, in the winter, we rent one motor grader each season. This year, we're requesting to rent two, and that's due to one of our motor graders is down right now. Transmission is out, and we don't think that we're going to be able to have it replaced in time to be useful this snow season. We got estimates from, we, we requested quotes from three different companies for, for rental or leased motor graders. RDO Equipment, Butler Machine, and Ziegler Cat. Ziegler didn't believe they could get us a machine. Butler came back with, they weren't sure that they could get us two machines. They gave us an estimated price of $7,500 a month to lease if they could, plus $70 an hour after the allotted 50 hours a month. RDO Equipment said that they could definitely get us two machines. They were about $1,200 a month cheaper at $6,300 a month, which is about a 5% increase in cost from last year's price with a $65 an hour fee when we're over our 250 hours for the season. We also had asked RDO that if we did rent graders from them and we were able to get our motor grader repaired before the end of the winter, if we could bring one of the graders back. And they said that we could do that, and they would just prorate the cost of the rental for us. So I'm recommending that we rent two motor graders from RDO Equipment in Grand Forks for $6,300 a month per machine.
Anybody have any questions for Jason? Ben?
Yeah, thank you. Jason, for the grader that's down, are we ordering a new transmission for that or are we fixing the current transmission?
It would be a rebuilt transmission.
That we're ordering?
Yeah, that we would order through, they all come out of Sweden and they're backward right now. So, yeah. And then we'd actually have to ship our machine to a facility where they would do the repair. So there'd be the cost of the repair and the cost of shipping too, as well. Oh, and I should add to this, too. There is a cost to ship the motor graders for rental. If they have to ship them, ship our rental grader from Bismarck, it'll be $2,000 fee to ship it to us. They have one at RDO right now, and they may have one there, so that might not be a fee, but that's a possibility.
Yeah, is, is the fixing of the current transmission, is that budgeted or?
It's not a budgeted cut. I mean, we budgeted so much in repairs for a year, so yes and no, to a point it is. I'll, I'll be bringing that back before the council, before we do anything with it. We're just trying to work out some details.
Okay, thank you.
Domes.
Yeah.
How old is the one that's down right now?
2012.
2012, and is there a lot of hours on it? Are we going to be looking at more in repairs than?
Yes, I'll get, I'll get in more in that when I present it. There's a lot to it, actually, yeah.
Okay, so, so the repairing and the transmission hasn't been ordered yet or no that's been done yet? Do you get, okay.
No, that'll come before council, before anything's done.
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
Anybody else have anything? Seen none, sir? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to number four, discussion on snow removal along Bigland Road and 13th Street Southeast. Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another item that came out of the Finance Committee meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, they were looking for everyone to come up with different ideas on cost savings. One of the ones that got brought up from the Parks Department was snow removal along the east, west sides of Bigland and 13th Street Southeast. Currently, the park spends approximately eight hours after each snow event cleaning sidewalks adjacent to private properties. The committee raised the question, should the city continue, continue to remove that snow along the private property? Excuse me. By stopping the task of removing snow, the city would gain the ability to prioritize other key areas after a snow event, such as the Greenway Trail system or the outdoor arenas. There's no major budget impact from this. What we'll see, long-term savings on staff hours, fuel savings, and equipment savings. Don't really have a recommendation at this time, mostly just looking for some feedback from the council on if this is something we want to continue to do. What was enclosed was a list of the properties, sidewalk footage along Bigland Road and 13th, the city ordinance of snow and ice removal on public sidewalks, and letters that were sent out to the residents when the sidewalks were constructed. So the, a little bit of history there, the first sidewalk was constructed in 2009, was along the east side of Bigland Road and then went on 13th. The letter was sent out letting people know that there was going to be, it was, it was going to be paid for from Safe Routes to schools. There was, and the city was going to maintain the tree trimmings, and they were going to do the, the snow removal on that road. That was the first letter in 2011. That sidewalk gets completed in 2012. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, that was the first, in 2008, that sidewalk gets completed in 2009. They move over to the west side, get another grant from Safe Routes, put in the same sidewalk. At that time, the discussion was, should the, the private property owners along that route be in charge of maintaining those sidewalks? The decision was made somewhere along the lines that since the city was already going to maintain the one side and 13th, that they would just turn around and come back down the other route. Good, good time to bring this up now because it gives, for one, with the Finance Committee, it's kind of one of those items that I've just been hanging out and wondering where to go. Two, if it's a decision that the city decides they want to hand this back over to the property owners, then it's a good opportunity to get those letters out to those property owners now and let them kind of know what they can expect this winter. Things that have changed since originally the sidewalk was put in is there was, the city owned more of that property along that route. But since then, there's been property acquisitions and property has changed hands. So just a good opportunity to kind of review if that's something that we want to keep going with or if, if we want to take that savings and, and time savings and, and use that manpower in, in other areas.
I'll just throw it out. I remember when this was being put in, I know our saying that we would remove snow along there was one of the ways to make it a little more palatable to those residents that live along there. You know, we're coming in, putting the sidewalk, and it was going to be kind of a little olive branch from us to them saying, hey. And I don't think it was a perpetual commitment, you know, for the next 100 years or anything, but at that time, the commitment was made to move that snow as a way to make it a little easier to, for them to accept it. And I guess I just throw that out as part of the conversation. Are we ready to now revert back to the citywide policy of having them take their snow? Or do we feel we need to continue or want to continue along the way we set it up in the first place? You know, what commitment did we make to them? I know I'm trying to read through here and catch, did we say we'd do it for how long or what?
Yeah, there was no time limit ever given on how long. And I think probably the property owners that would have the biggest impact are the, there's a couple of properties along the east side that have it in their backyard. That could maybe be a challenge for them. Either they're going to have to go all the way around the block to get there, or they're going to have to keep a path open through their backyard to keep that sidewalk open. So that could be a challenge for them. And initially, it was thought at the Finance Committee that we would bring just the west side. But then if we figured since, if we're going to have the conversation, well, then let's just talk about it all, and we'll talk about it one time. And so on the, on the, on the east side, you do have a couple of different residents where they have, the sidewalk is in their backyard. When you go on to the west side of Bigland Road, then it's mostly side yards and front yards. So there's probably a couple of different options that we could really look at is, why, option one would probably be just doing it the way that, continue to do it the way we're doing it. Option two would be maybe start that transition now, take over the west side and, and leave the, the east side the way it is. Or then option three, I would say, would probably be hand it all over to the private property owners and then use, use those man-hours elsewhere. There is still a couple pieces of city property along that stretch, so it's not like we wouldn't be out there at all. So there's a few, a few, we still would have to run a piece of equipment out there and do some snow removal. But instead of having to work our way all the way back, we could jump on a Greenway Trail or something like that and start, start working those and try to get those open a little bit more quickly.
Ben?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we do from, because we essentially start from like the fire department, right?
Yep.
And then head all the way down and then come back?
Correct.
Right? Could we do, say, from the fire department down to Wharton's crossover and then come back and do that stretch? Because I know there are residents there that they've got, I think, one of the, where the school used to be, I think it was Crestwood School. There's privacy fences there, and that's an older community. And a few of those- that's an older community, and a few of those literally, like, they're not going to have access to get to that stretch of sidewalk, so what are we going to, just assess them?
No, they have, they do have a HSA and they already hire someone to remove snow because they're private streets. They've been told that they're going to be having to start removing snow there because they did it before and then when the city started, then they stopped, and then when the city stopped, then they decided they weren't going to do it. But I have been in contact with the homeowners association because we did receive a complaint on that last year, and by the time we could get, they could get someone out there, it was already hardened and compacted. But I kind of had visited with Reed when he was with the Parks and Rec that we would obviously jump on that now if we do decide because they're already paying someone to remove snow for a majority of all of the streets, and they had been paying someone to remove snow off the sidewalks on that side and snow off the sidewalks on Fifth, so, yeah, and I mean, they've got more than just one sidewalk, so to me, it would seem logical that they would just hire whoever that company is to do that on Bigland as well, so.
Sure.
And then the sidewalks, the sidewalks along the VFW Arena and the Frolf Course would still be the city's responsibility to keep those open. And then, you know, another point would be McBrotter's. That's a corner that tends to blow in a lot and there's, there can be a lot of man-hours spent out there. Again, when the initial agreement was made, the city was using that as a snow dump and they were maintaining, mowing, and taking care of all that property, but that has since changed. We no longer use it as a snow dump. It's been starting in the development, so that would be another spot where if we could hand that off to the private property owner, that would save us a lot of time.
Reed?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add to this a little bit, too, just to maybe continue to point out and clarify where, over the years, we've grown some inconsistencies in how we're applying this policy. There's along Greenway Boulevard and at that intersection of Greenway Boulevard and Bigland Road, where townhomes have been developed in recent years, we've added Safe Route to School sidewalks in recent years. We've created inconsistencies in how we're following our ordinance and where city is currently cleaning and where we're expecting private property owners to do so. As an example, before all those townhomes were built on the west side of Bigland Road at Greenway Boulevard in that intersection, that was all, there was sidewalk there and it was all city-owned property, so we were cleaning sidewalk in that property. The moment the townhomes were built, we notified the property developer that they would now become their responsibility to clean sidewalks in front of or alongside their homes. The same on the south side of that road, there's a private property owner that owns a largely undeveloped stretch of property that we added a sidewalk to, that the second the sidewalk was built, that property owner was informed it would be their responsibility to clean it and they've done so. Now, you go directly kitty-corner across the street, we sold a development property to a different property owner and we have maintained the snow removal on it in the McBrotter property. And a lot up and down that street, as we've added Safe Routes to School, there have been homes developed, there have been sidewalks added. In certain situations, we've continued to move snow on those sidewalks in front of their homes or on the side of their homes, so it's really just asking this request. You know, I think I would agree with Jeremy's statement that we could look at this probably in two separate pieces or maybe even more than two separate pieces. The commitment, as I understand it, along the east side of Bigland Road was the initial Safe Route sidewalk that was put in, that's largely in back and side yards. That was, to my understanding, the only commitment that we've made that the city would move snow from. The east side, or the west side, I'm sorry, and the connection along Thirteenth Street getting to the elementary school, which is more front and side properties, I believe we just anecdotally added that on our own account, on our own accord, and not necessarily by a direction of the city council. It just through work management was added, so I think that'd be my request is that we'd go back to, you know, I mean, kind of start from scratch and looking at this on a map basis and deciding where we want. And then the last piece of it to add, just to remind, Jeremy touched on it, but the work responsibilities that could be prioritized instead of this. If you recall last winter, when this discussion started, it was largely centered around a time that we were not maintaining outdoor rinks or building outdoor rinks, and we cited staff issues as part of that. Now, our staffing levels in Park and Rec are in a better place now than they were then with some full-time hires we've been able to make. But that said, historically, the Park and Rec staff would tell you they've not been happy with the amount of time they've been able to commit to outdoor rinks or to Greenway Trails in a timely manner, and by removing this workload in any capacity, it would only improve their ability to get to those amenities more quickly.
Questions or suggestions?
This is something we want to move forward with. As you were indicating, you would bring back more maps and suggestions, is that what you two would?
Yeah, really just wanting to get a feel for how the city council felt, and I think, yeah, we could, we could come up with a strong recommendation on how we feel it should be handled and come forward with that if everybody feels that this is something we should spend time to look at.
I think it is.
Okay.
But?
Two quick thoughts on how you'd break it out and continue to do part and not do part. So part of it would be to go back to the original commitment that we made or did not make, you know, review that. The other part is if a sidewalk on the back of someone's house feels more like a rec trail, right, I mean, that's a little bit of a nebulous thing, but, you know, if it feels like a rec trail that really that resident wouldn't even use at all, it happens to be running adjacent to their property for connecting these other things, right?
Yep.
So that's kind of a guiding principle. If it has more feel of a community rec trail, that would be more likely to stay in our care, and then back to the original agreement that was made, might be two ways to look at it.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. What is the history of why this fell on Parks and Rec, other than the proximity to the Greenway responsibility?
You know?
Well, I don't know that I have the history. Maybe Nancy can help on that, other than that basically all sidewalks in the city that are city responsibility have fallen on Park and Rec, and I would imagine that's largely based on equipment. The Park and Rec Department is more set with the equipment that fits on sidewalks. There's not a rule in my mind that that's the way it would have to remain, but that's the way it's been set up.
I would agree with that. I would think the public works doesn't, their equipment's pretty much all too big to fit on the sidewalk, they don't really have anything small enough to open sidewalks.
I wrote all of the Safe Routes to School sidewalk grants. The first one in particular, I do agree with Mayor that to kind of get those homeowners to understand the need for a sidewalk there, which after it was built, they were all in favor of it, but a majority of them, it was in their backyard. One was in favor of the sidewalk, but because it was so far in their backyard, they were very concerned as to how they were going to get snow removal back there. One at the time, they had trees along it, to get around, they would have to get on the street and go all the way around, and so at that point in time, Dick Grassel had said, you know, we really need to get some sort of way for the kids to get out to the school on Bigland rather than on the street. We're going to build it and we're going to agree to do the snow for those that it's in their backyards. Because we really only had, I think, one, maybe two, that had a front yard stretch and for, to require those that had it in their front yard to do the snow removal and then just come off and then go back on, they just kind of ran through. So that was the first side. When we applied for the west side, the council said, no, we're not going to move snow all the way down. It's just, it's going to be too timely. Send out a letter, so both the letters came from me. The one notified the people that we would be maintaining it. The other one was that we would be discussing with them how maintenance needed to go because it says in there that we're going to discuss maintenance. They were informed that they would be removing snow. At the time, the Parks and Rec were doing it, because once you receive federal dollars for anything, it states in our resolution that the city requires that the sidewalk be maintained. It doesn't say how or who does the maintaining, it just states the city would make sure that that sidewalk's being maintained. So that's why we had to have a sit-down with the homeowners. However, Parks and Rec at the time and whoever was doing it just decided, well, just come up the back way, you know, rather than skipping in and out, we'll just go down one side and up the other. The homeowners were made notice that they were going to have to do it because a majority of the properties on that side were a front side, or even if it was a side yard, they had some sort of garage or a way to kind of easily get onto that sidewalk rather than going on the street or going through their backyard. But then, again, I don't know why the city took it over, but they just did. We have done other projects, CAT projects, you know, different types of transportation projects. Some we've done with transit dollars and transit is moving a lot of snow, particularly around Its Williams, they're doing a lot of that snow removal because that's city property and City's Area Transit is doing that because it's close to our shelters. That's why we just recently purchased them a tool cat and us a tool cat so that we could easily get onto that. But, yeah, somehow it just ended up, I think, in Parks and Rec lap, and every time, you know, we've added sidewalk, they've just been told that they're going to add that to their list of more sidewalk to move. Plus, they're doing the downtown and, you know, that's a whole separate issue that maybe we can bring up a different day, but yeah, removing snow from sidewalks and parking lots downtown, that also takes up a lot of our time, so.
Just one follow-on question, if you will. What is the, what do we have for enforcement in our ordinances if a property owner does not clear their sidewalk in this example?
It's in there, I think it's a...
Yeah, it states that. City to remove snow and ice, the city may cause, the city may cause to be removed from the public sidewalks beginning twenty-four hours after snow and ice has ceased to fall all snow and ice, which may be discovered thereon, and it shall keep a record of the cost of the removal and the private property adjacent to which the accumulations were found and removed.
We don't have the same type of system that Grand Forks does. I think they have a flat fee and they have someone that goes out and does it. What happens is if I receive that notice, I usually write up a letter, either give it to the police or I try not to send it certified because if they don't sign for it, then it goes to Grand Forks. It could be seven to fourteen days before they even get it, which is well beyond the twenty-four hours notice, so we try to get notice to them as soon as possible. If they don't do it or if they've, if we don't see noticeable change, then I go ahead and I have a company that I hire and then we special assess it.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Mayor, I understand what you're talking about, the backyard thing, but I also think we need to be careful on this because I can see us getting ourselves into a pickle here if we do it for one and not for all. So we're going to have to look at that really hard and make sure we're fair to everybody about it. I agree, we need to keep them sidewalk, they need to stay clean for getting to school, there's no doubt about it, so we might have to do a little bit more hard knocking a little bit there to get that to where we can keep everybody happy so we don't run into problems all across town.
I fully agree. If there would be two different ways of going at it, you'd have to have a distinct reason why, not just that so-and-so is a friend of yours and so-and-so is not, we couldn't do it like that. So you'd have to have a really, you know, solid reason why this one is being handled this way and this one is another way.
Anybody else have anything on that? I see none, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much. Number five, discussion on twenty-four budget. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to update you where we're at with budget for 2024. I know I mentioned a lot that is kind of fluid and it sounds funky, but it really does. So when I sent this out last Friday, we're in the hole three hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and seven dollars. Today, we're at three sixty-nine because it just changed somebody, changed in the insurance, so it went down sixteen hundred dollars. So a reminder that our preliminary levy needs to be done by the end of September. We have a meeting next week, a regular council meeting where it would be voted on. We can set up a special meeting if it does not get approved on next Tuesday, and from last week to this week, it changed twenty-five thousand dollars to the hole because of Jason's road grader. We adjusted that twenty-five thousand for that additional grader for snow removal. And at this time, to break even, we would need eleven percent tax increase in levy. And that would give us no cushion for any other changes, negotiations, or whatever. So any kind of suggestions, recommendations?
I think in the past, like we always says, we can always go down, we can't go up, so I'm assuming that, I'm not going to speak for everyone, we're not setting it at eleven percent and work it down. What else are you going to do? Because we're not going to be done with negotiations or anything else until after that, I'm assuming.
That's a reasonable approach.
Anybody else have any input or? Mr. Larson?
Thank you. Yeah, just a question for those of you who've been serving longer than I have. Do we have any history of coming in more aggressive and then figuring it out? Have we, have we done that in the past successfully or unsuccessfully? I'm just curious if somebody was to say, well, we want to be at five, this is eleven, I'm going to say seven and a half to force us on the other side. Just curious to hear feedback from the other council members.
I don't know if you've ever done that. Nancy, have you been here longer?
Past mayor's vetoed approval, like it were X percent.
Kind of another way of setting that line there. And I'm not saying it's a good idea, I was just curious if we've done that in the past.
I know the mayor's already said at five percent, he will veto it anyway.
That's what I heard, so.
And I will say to that question, even when we set it a bit higher, we've done really well to still grind it out and get it down to that reasonable target. So, yeah, I'd be happy to go at it either way with the commitment that we're going to get under that number. And I mean, it's a team effort. It's everybody in this room and a lot of people that aren't in this room, how that happens. So I have no doubt in my mind that it will happen again. Could we maybe force our hand and command it a little more aggressively on the front end? I think that's worthy of consideration.
Maybe a couple reminders that in the past, when it's been done, that, you know, you can go and dip into the fund balance. This year, we had the Ad-Hoc Finance Committee and we looked at everything, so there's no wiggle room in non-personnel costs, equipment. So when we look at this, we're looking at personnel, which we're looking at services or you're looking at fund balance. And maybe a suggestion would be if we did a ten percent, then if a taxpayer calls and we actually get to five percent, it's easy to say, well, the increase is only going to be half for the city. Because it's really hard to figure out what somebody's tax will be with the ten percent levy because it's not a mill system. It's depending on how many property in the pot for the city of East Grand Forks. So I guess to make it easier, if we did, you know, like you suggested, maybe a little lower, if we did the ten percent with our goal at five, then when a taxpayer calls and they see, oh, my bill went up five hundred dollars, well, that's with the ten percent levy. But we're really trying to get to a five percent levy, so your increase should only be two hundred and fifty dollars.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
The only other rationale for leaving it a little bit higher is we're still waiting on some numbers, right? And if some numbers came, you know, double what we currently are projecting, we'd maybe have to dip into our fund for that.
are projecting, we'd maybe have to dip into our fund for that $370,000 and be higher than 5. I mean, this old mayor has to be a little flexible, too. If something really strange developed between now and the end of this year, we'd have to keep an open mind. So, that would be the only other rationale for leaving it a higher than 5% number is for that unforeseen event, where we have to go $370,000 into our reserves and still come up short. So, just throwing that out as possibility.
Anything else from anyone? Mr. Holmes?
September 29?
That's preliminary, right?
Preliminary. December 29.
December, end of December.
Ready?
Okay, so the question is, what would you want the resolution to say for next week?
You can leave it open if you want.
Pardon?
You can leave it open if you want.
Okay.
You can add to discussion.
Okay, we can do that.
I'd personally want 11 on there. But you also have to remember, too, if you dip into that reserve, we're already at, what, 44%? Because we take that large dollar amount. This last year, we were at 52, weren't we? Had to go down.
51, and then that $370,000, I think it was like 44, 45.
Ready? Anything else on that? Not entertained motion to adjourn. Do by Larson? Mr. Holmes, all in favor, say aye. Pull the same sign. Motion is carried, means adjournment.